Motion to approve the agenda as printed.
That's over.
Second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded to approve the agenda as printed. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay? Motion carried. Cell phones off please, or vibrate. Yeah, yours off, we hear you're vibrating.
That's what I did, I just shut them off.
Approve the minutes from last meeting, please.
I make that motion to approve the minutes of October 27th.
Second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded to approve the minutes from last meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay? Alright, Franny is not here, but guess what, Chris? I'll bet you're looking for three of these.
There you go.
There's the payroll. We, Chris and I will make a decision tomorrow if somebody else will approve the bills, or Franny will be able to make it in. We're gonna watch the weather and see what it does tonight, so we'll wait on the bills to be paid.
But if you guys have any questions?
Yeah, please.
Let's get them out now, and then we can make sure.
Ask Franny.
Bankers Trustee, General Obligation, HO, TOO, what's that, Chris?
That's our bond interest. All three of those are. We have to pay our interest in June and December of every year.
The payment to JDS. It's coming out of the...
That will come out of the park account, yes. Sack County Abstract, that's, uh, we ordered abstracts for the six lots that are sold up at the new addition.
What is Prinsco Supplies, sixteen hundred?
That's, uh...
Well, they can deal that seventy, thirty-seven dollar, that's for the, shut off.
Yeah.
Figured that, yeah, okay.
Uh, Prinsco is the company that we got the pipe from for the storm sewer project that George just got done with. So those are elbows, Ts, Ys, stuff like that. And, uh, where are the bills? Steve, right on top there are two that, that I would like to have added. This first one is from George Schmidt. He got done with that project. He bid us ten dollars a foot, which ended up being eight hundred and eighty roughly feet of pipe, and then several incidentals that went along with that, like the Ts and going to get those. Now, he didn't bill us for those because those came from here, but, uh, he had to haul away some dirt, had to, um... Looks like he charged us for three trips to Fort Dodge. Uh, so the total bill was eleven thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars and thirty-three cents, which I didn't think was too terrible, bad for getting that done. And then another one, this one you guys have seen already, uh, the bill from Snyder and Associates for six hundred and sixty-two dollars and forty cents. I asked Dave, you know, uh, when we were gonna be done being billed for this project and what this was for, and what he told me was that he had to come up here and do some kind of inspection on, maybe the final inspection, I can't remember exactly what it was. But that was the four hours and the mileage, uh, is basically what that six hundred and sixty-two dollars was. And then he told me that, uh, he would, in his words, he, Snyder would eat the last fifteen hundred dollars that it would cost us to get the project finished up. And I basically said, well, yeah, they should because, uh, you're going way over contract, so, um... He tried to make us feel bad, and actually makes us feel pretty good, really, so...
Motion for the additions?
I just want to...
Second? Moved and seconded to make the two additions, Chris has just announced to us. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay? Those will be added to the bills to be paid. I have one question. Grosbner Supplies, fifteen hundred, Chris?
Yeah, that's natural gas.
Okay.
Uh, and most of those supplies are for either, um, CPS, where we're gonna get hooked up, or the new addition.
Okay. I entertain a motion to accept the bills to be paid. Do I hold it? You wanna wait?
I'll make a motion, I'll accept them with, uh, with approval.
Franny's approval.
And with the changes.
Let's not say Franny's approval, though, because if Franny can't get to them, then...
Yeah, Franny can't make it, then we're gonna have to make a different decision, that's right. Upon, upon approval, let's say.
There you go.
Okay. Moved and seconded to approve the bills to be paid.
Did Ron second that?
Yes. With the additions and, uh, correct approval. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay? Okay. CDBG Project Update Pay Request Number Five and Change Order Number Three.
Yeah, Ben from Snyder and Associates is here, or Snyder and Associates, from Sunquist, sorry, Ben.
Yeah, let's get that.
That's not very nice, is it?
Competition.
I did not mean to do that.
No, that's fine.
Uh, Ben's got the, the copies for Steve to sign. But I, what I wanna talk about is change order number three. I talked to you guys last time about that, and, uh, what I said was that that, that was done mainly for, um, Sargent's, uh, benefit, for them to be able to flush when, when they're doing whatever work they're doing down there. Well, I talked to Rick, and I talked to Joe Rouschenberg a little more after that day, and, and they actually, Rick actually told me that this, it's in our benefit to have it in there. Now, um, you know, I kinda wish those guys would've been able to tell us that at the last meeting, they didn't do that. So, uh, from now on, we'll, we'll have better information when we come to you guys with something like that, so, um...
That's for that fire hydrant, right?
Yeah, what, what we talked about are better in our advantage is that we'll be able to flush those mains from down there and not up here, so it'll take less water, first of all, to flush them. It'll keep the mains cleaner from here to there. So, you know, it'll just, it'll just lengthen the life of the, of the well and the mains, and it'll make our work easier. So, you know, I'm not sure that it's worth five thousand dollars, but it's over and done with now, there's...
Well, plus affect us down there if we have a problem with the, with the, uh, figure eight rates, there's a hybrid here.
They shouldn't, that shouldn't be an issue.
It's just gonna be a plus, I think, an added benefit for us. Or if the airport hangar goes up.
Are they gonna make the top of that, or the dirt and all that a little better looking than it is now?
It looks nice now. They gotta do it.
Did they do it?
Yeah, they'll, uh...
I was down here, yesterday or day before, and...
It'll be, it'll be just grass there, and it'll be something that we mow all the time, so it looks, it looks pretty decent now, other than it's just all dirt, so...
Think we oughta just plant flowers on it.
That's what I think we should do.
Sunflowers.
What that maybe costs, we should have something up there.
Make it say Walt Lake.
I think, uh...
And mow it like that all summer long.
I think Dawn's getting herself a job here. Uh, but if you look at the pay request, uh, looks, looks like the project is getting pretty well completed. It's ninety-two percent, or roughly, you know, that's what they're, that's what they're thinking, so, uh, this pay request is for a hundred and ten thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars and sixty-one cents, so that's a pretty good chunk of the last part of this deal, so... I don't know if you guys have any questions.
We in budget, are we, Chris?
You know, Gary, since we had to move the, the well from there to there, we're gonna be, we're gonna be over budget. And I would guess, you know, of twenty, thirty thousand dollars, that probably cost us to move that down there. And maybe even more than that, I don't know. I guess I haven't really looked real close, since it's been done in two different fiscal years. But I can, I can look at that, and I can put those numbers together and tell you...
Be a little nice and obvious where we're at.
Tell you exactly what it cost.
The one thing we did get lucky is we didn't have to buy land from, from any dentist, we didn't have to, we didn't have to pay rent for twenty-five years, so, uh, we will, we'll pick a little bit of that back up.
That was probably, probably a wash, you know, from...
If we just pay ten dollars for two lots there, or ten dollars an acre, we needed about two acres, there's twenty thousand, so, take that back off.
Plus, we're hooked into an endless supply of water now.
No, yeah.
So, maybe in Walley we're better off.
And if we need another well at some point. We already got the line run to it, so...
Yeah, south of there.
Yeah. I vote we approve the change order.
Change order number three?
Change order number three.
Second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the change order number three. All in favor say aye. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed nay? Now I would, uh, request a motion for the pay request number five. No, Chris?
No, I, I always, I always put the pay request in first, and the change order should always be first. I always do that. I'm dyslexic or something, I don't know.
Motion for the pay request, number five?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded to approve pay request number five. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed nay?
Now, the one last thing I wanna point out on there is, uh, and you can go ahead, Steve, and sign if you want to. Page nine and page ten. At the last meeting, Joe talked a little bit about how their contract had run out. We, we had a contract with Sunquist to pay up to eighty thousand dollars for engineering. You can look there at the bottom on page nine, and it says subtotal eighty thousand dollars. But if you look above that, where it says, uh, subtotal tasks one through four and construction services, and add those two numbers together, that's sixty-nine thousand basically and forty-one thousand, you're at a hundred and ten thousand dollars there. So this project actually has cost them a hundred and ten thousand dollars. We've only paid eighty thousand of that. So when Joe told us that they aren't billing us anymore for the, for the work that they're doing, for Ben being here tonight, for Joe coming when he comes, they're right, and...
That's why they sent you instead of Joe.
So then if you look at...
If you look at the stag, you'll be fine, welcome.
Then if you look at page ten, you can see exactly what we paid them, and it comes up to exactly eighty thousand dollars. So Joe was right, you know, they've done what we asked them to do, and they've done what they said they would do, so...
How many copies do you need, Chris?
Uh, we only get one.
Well, that'll help very often, and we usually align with engineers.
Oh, really?
Sometimes they always come up with another deal.
That's why we need to have contracts from now on that say not to exceed.
Yeah, this is it.
Not to exceed this amount of money.
Okay, financial report, Chris?
Yeah, we talked about this at the last meeting, and so the one in, in the computer is updated. Uh, and basically, all I really did on this one was put the budget in, way over on the far corner on page eleven. They wanna see what we budgeted for, uh, for the fiscal year, and so you can see that.
Oh, I got more?
Got more.
And I went over it two or three times after the meeting. Uh, can't really find anything. That should, should be changed, I guess. I don't know if you guys saw anything on yours? You got any questions? Now's the time to talk about it, otherwise we can... This has to be approved. It doesn't necessarily have to be approved tonight, but it has to be approved, and then it has to be published. This page right here has to be published in the paper, and then we have to send it to the state before December first.
Is this one of those things that has to be approved by two people?
Just this page?
No, just the...
Just that page?
That's the only page that has to be published, Ron. Yeah, and, and if you look at it in spreadsheet form, all of the pages behind it, you put the numbers in, and then this page totals all those numbers up, so that's all this page really does.
How do you explain that? How do you come up with those combinations sometimes? Of amounts to equal?
Yeah.
Thank you. Chris, uh, maybe this is a dumb question, but what is, what is our debt obligation right now? It's in there, but what, do we have a number?
What is, what is our total debt?
Our total debt.
Our total debt's about one point two, one point three million dollars. Yeah, it's about one point two million right now, one point one. Thanks, Ben.
Thank you.
Five hundred thousand of that is, no, that's not right either. Five hundred and twenty plus the three fifty plus the hundred and one, so nine hundred and some thousand of that is, uh, GO, general obligation. That's the one that we can't exceed. That's the one we can only go up to a one point five million. That's on the last page here.
It said one point five five eight, is that the number?
Yep, one point five eight. That's, that's all the higher we can go on GO. One point five five eight, yep. Now, if we wanna do a revenue bond, we can bond whatever of that we want to, or whatever they'll let us bond, the, the bond companies, whatever they'll buy from us. But I, you know, I still don't think that's a good idea to just borrow as much money.
The electric one that we're planning to pay off is a GO bond.
No, that one is the rev, that's the only revenue bond that we have.
Right, right. Well, we just wanna make sure we just don't get ourselves completely in trouble.
No, and, and, you know, there's some things, like the GO bond, um, the, the auditor of the county, if, if he sees that we can't pay that, he will levy enough money to pay that, and, and whoever the taxpayers are in the, in the city have, will have to pay that, just kinda like me, just like I told you. But on the, on the revenue bond, um, you have to have a, a, uh, CD, a revenue CD, which is ten percent of the original amount of the bond, so there are some things that you have to do with revenue, too, that you, I mean, you can't just go bond the money if, so...
I mean, you could give it, you could just pay thirty cents on the dollar.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, ain't so bad. And the poor people that had the bond got kinda in the short end.
Any more questions for Chris?
Now, like I said, you can, you can approve this tonight, or you don't have to.
Who are your friends here?
The next council meeting would be the twenty-fourth, so I would have to, I would have to tell them that we need to have it published that, that Thursday. We'd have to have it published that Thursday, and then get it set to the state. Oh, yeah, that probably isn't gonna work, is it? Is it the holiday week?
Yeah.
Yeah, we better approve it tonight, then.
Don't like to go, kinda like agree with Rob, I think we should have a little more fuller council, but I don't think we have any way around it, do we, Rob?
No.
Well, I would entertain a motion to approve the financial, or the annual financial reports fiscal year two fourteen, twenty fourteen.
I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded to approve the annual financial report fiscal year twenty fourteen. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed nay? We didn't need a roll on that, because we don't have to anyway.
Big money stuff without a roll call here.
Things are going pretty good.
He's confused.
Thanks, Ron.
Approve the C E A T team to work with I D E A, and we talked a little bit about this at the last meeting, and, um, I didn't have, I was gonna put a piece of paper in here with names on it, but I decided not to do that because I didn't, uh, I didn't have any affirmatives from a couple of the people that we asked for until later. Uh, Steve Newzman did say that he would, uh, serve on that with us, and that, so I think what we'll do is, I'll put in the minutes, uh, if you guys are alright with this, that Steve Drubengay, Lynn Grossly, me, and, uh, Steve Newzman will be the four. I didn't hear back from Twilight Acres. So I think we'll just go with those four, and, uh, I'm meeting with that guy, uh, Wednesday at one o'clock, so we can move forward a little bit with that. Is that Jason, or is that somebody higher?
Jason Parker is his name, yeah. So, so what I'm do, what I, what I'm asking you guys to approve is the four people that I just met, some Steve Drubengay, Steve Newzman, Lynn Grossly, and Chris.
That's for the energy deal, right?
Right, to work with I D E A on the energy.
Do you want a council member on there?
Uh, that's up to you guys.
Man doesn't matter to me, but I... Really need another job, you know?
Well, no, I, I think you would be good at it, but I don't, I know you don't need another job. Gary probably needs another job.
The only thing is, like, this saving energy like that, like Twilight Acres, I mean, they, I'm sure there's some real, probably spots there that would really be beneficial for them, but...
Are you on the board up there?
I don't know, but, like, trying to talk them into natural gas would be beneficial for them, but to get them to do it, that's something that we could look into, I mean, whoever's on that board. Now, I think they could save some money.
How do you feel, Gary? You want, you want a council member on or not?
It's fine with me. Don't make a difference where you're gonna meet, they ain't gonna meet very much, are they?
No, a couple times a year at the most, probably.
I don't care, I'll be honest, you want somebody on there.
I vote we approve those five names, then.
Okay, second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the five names as announced to, uh, work with I D E A. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed nay? Motion passed.
Gary, it's five to two right now, just keeping score here.
Thanks.
The program that most of us went to, I think Dawn was there, Keep Iowa Beautiful Program, S E T D.
Dawn's here to talk about that.
Yeah, um, where we've gotten with that is, by the end of the week, we have, will have gotten to every council in the county, including Nima Haw, we were the ones, or they were the ones we thought maybe wouldn't go for this.
Yeah.
But they're in, and what I'm asking for is, um, tomorrow the supervisors are going to approve the payment, and it's twenty thousand dollars a year for the county.
For how many years?
Five.
For five years.
Yeah. Do you guys all know, Rob, you were there?
And Chloe actually, Chloe actually came and talked to us about this.
Okay, so you guys can all know.
She talked to the council, yeah.
Yeah, it's a five-year commitment. Um, pretty much the funds go to the person that we hire in the county to come around to all the councils and to do the countywide meetings, and, um, within about a two-year period, the gallon Pocahontas has gone to like two hundred and twenty-one meetings, so this person does a lot. But what the supervisors are gonna approve tomorrow is they're gonna commit ten thousand a year, so that takes half of it out. Then S E T D will do like twenty-eight hundred to three thousand, and then we're asking each community to give a dollar per capita for five years. So every year you would throw in to that program.
Well, it could be around eight hundred and...
Yeah, eight hundred.
Twenty-five, forty-something.
Eight hundred and thirty. What?
Seven hundred and fifty, maybe, I mean, per capita?
Well, I'm going by the last census.
We gotta go by the last census.
The last census said eight hundred and nineteen.
Eight forty-five or eight forty-one.
Yeah, it's, it's eight hundred, around eight hundred and thirty, I think.
Eight hundred and nineteen is the last census.
Alright, I was gonna say eight, it was in the eight twenties, but, um, and then what we would do from there, once we get all the city council approvals, then we can go to the guy, um, with the hometown pride, and he'll put together a contract, and then we'll have to come back and have each city sign the contract saying that they're in. But I wanna also mention at the same time, once we approve this, um, they pick a person from each community to kinda head their community program, and they would be on the county board, which would mean the county board first meets and hires the person that will help our county. And then the person for our city would be kinda head the group that we get within our city, which can be any number of people we want, you know, I'm, I'm hoping fifteen to twenty people.
And it doesn't necessarily have to be a councilman?
No, the person that heads it, I think, shouldn't be a councilman.
I, I agree.
Have you, I know that, uh, the Lions Club has been approached on this, I know that they've said, well, we kinda do that anyway, so we're... I'd still like to see us marry this with this Lions Club if we could somehow.
That's totally up to you guys, but you guys would need to make the commitment, and then probably go to them and ask to pay, reimburse you. Is probably how we'd have to do it.
Well, I don't, no, I don't know about the monetary reimbursement, I just...
Oh, you mean to work together?
To work.
Heck, yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Then I think that we could probably get the Lions Club to partner with us in some projects.
Right. And, and it's so vast, I mean, um, Verina, the one where the tornado went through, isn't that what it's called? They redid some stuff there and put in like a small park, which their community would've never afforded. I don't know if Chloe told you, but five hundred and fifty-six thousand in two years has come into their community, and not one dollar did anybody have to match.
That was into Pocahontas County, right?
Yeah, so, you know, like the REAP grant, you have to have a match and stuff, no, there wasn't any matches. They did get a REAP grant in Pocahontas County, but...
Fond has gotten it more than once.
Their labor was their, income labor was their match.
Oh, really?
Mm-hmm. So, I mean, we've talked a lot, like, working with Lakeview and doing a trail, you know? It's not all about, um, just Walt Lake, but it's about kinda maybe going back and getting some camaraderie, especially with IC, with the school system, you know, like with SAC City and Lakeview and Walt Lake to kinda start, you know? And Auburn, yeah, acting as one instead of, you know, separate entities. I know SAC City's a little concerned because, of course, they're gonna have to throw in more money than anybody else, but...
This would be a dollar per capita on top of our dollar and a half per capita that we give them.
Yeah, that's total separate, mm-hmm, absolutely. Actually, it's a dollar and a half.
That's what it says.
That's what it says. And, and honestly, I mean, at a, at eight hundred and twenty dollars, you know, this is something that really could benefit, benefit us. We could see a payback in the first couple of months, easily.
Well, and they, they can reach out and find grants that we've never heard of, you know, and we get to pick in our community what we wanna work on.
I know Lakeview and Walt Lake, Walt Lake, you've already got the bicycle trail, but I know SAC City would like to somehow get that added onto theirs. I'd like to see ours try and somehow get added onto their, uh, onto that trail, too, somehow, so...
So, I mean, there's things we can do amongst communities, and there's things that we can do in our own community, and we pick our own stuff, you know? I mean, it's what we wanna do, but the whole thing is, is the five-year commitment is to keep the ball rolling, keep the momentum going. I mean, people are gonna have to commit, they're gonna have a meeting every month, you know? I mean, it is, it's gonna be something that's just gonna, it's gotta keep the momentum going, 'cause once that stops, um, you don't get anything done.
Take the blinders off, and, and like you say, let's work with everybody, let's not just say, okay, this is focused on Walt Lake, let's work with everybody in the county.
Well, one part of the whole thing is, um, us going to a community our size, and people from another community coming here, and they write down the pluses and minuses that they see about our community, and we do the same thing to theirs. And it's kind of an eye-opener, because most of us have been here a long time.
Is that in our, in the same county, or is that?
No.
We go to a different county?
We're gonna go to a different county, you're not gonna stay in this county, so, yeah, again.
And, uh, Dawn, you figuring headed up, don't you, kinda?
No. I actually, I'll be honest with you, I have two people in mind, um, thinking that maybe it might take two people. I mean, people are so busy, but if one can't do it, the other one could. I haven't talked to them yet, um, till I know that we're committed to it. But, yeah, I'll help find these people.
You don't need one, if you're, if you're...
Honestly, I think that, uh, this would be something that we should commit to, and I think that we can probably look to the fitness center to maybe even pay the eight hundred and forty bucks or something, you know? I mean, we can talk with fitness center board and see if maybe that, because it is gonna be, you know... you know, better, a community betterment thing and the fitness center does have some funds from time to time, you know. After the first year and after the midway in the year, they seem to gain more money, don't they Lynn? Cause they buy your yearly membership or six-month memberships and it's, I think we could set it up on that side.
So really what I'm asking for, I'm not asking you to sign anything tonight. I'm just asking that if you guys would put in your minutes that you want to be part of this project as long as every, you know, all the other.
All the other ones are in, right?
Um, it's already been approved at Litten tonight. I believe is there. Tonight's is Auburn's, Nima Hau's and you guys. Um, Odey Gold's already approved it and Litten's already approved at their meetings for last week.
How did you get Nima Hau?
Um.
There's some disarray over there. How about Shayler?
Um, Shayler was last week. I haven't talked to Chloe. It was last Tuesday night, so I'm not sure. Um, Nima Hau, I can't believe, but you know, what's eighty bucks to them?
Yeah, what are you gonna do then?
You know, but they're, I think they're ready to do something, but they just have felt like they have no guidance.
Yeah.
So this will help them. They might only have three or four people on their board, but it's something, you know, so.
Yeah, for eighty dollars, this could be a really good deal for them.
Yeah, exactly.
Litten also.
Well, it's gonna be a good deal for everybody.
I think you should have a, a motion.
We'll find out. We'll try it to see what happens.
Yeah.
Shows that in the minutes that we had a motion that.
Yeah, we, we, I mean, that's really the only way to do it.
Yeah, okay.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Get it in there, yep. Been moved and seconded to uh, to be a part of the Iowa Beautiful Program. The city of Wal Lake.
Don't do it.
Roll call?
No. Is that enough, Chris, or are you wanting more or?
No, that, yeah, that's fine. I thought you were gonna do a roll call. That's why I said no.
No. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay?
I could hear it turning in your heads.
No, it wasn't because Rob gave me a dirty look earlier. I knew better than to do that.
I just have one other thing and it's with SCEF, the foundation, and I know it's not on here, but um, there's no way in heaven's green earth that we're gonna get the project completed in the park by December thirty-first. I mean, a hundred percent completed. So if we don't do that, the rules for the foundation are that we have to ask for an extension. So I'm requesting that we do that, cause our meeting is December first, I believe, or second. It's a Tuesday. Um, just to extend it for, you know, six months, three months, whatever. I mean, we've already spent our twenty-five thousand dollars. We've already spent our match at twenty-five thousand, but the project's not completed, so.
If we prove it on the twenty-fourth and if we put it on the agenda and prove it on the twenty-fourth, that'd be soon.
We're not gonna have a meeting in January. Well, it's gonna expire, so we won't have a meeting to approve it. That's why I need to approve. Oh, you mean the next meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Our meeting.
Yes.
Our next.
That's what I'm asking.
That way, yeah, that way we can vote on it.
Please, that would be perfect. And then I'll submit it to them and wonderful.
Thanks Dawn.
Have fun today.
Approve the annual urban renewal report fiscal year twenty fourteen.
Okay, so this is the first time you guys have seen this this year, so we don't necessarily have to approve it tonight. This is another report that's gotta be due or it's gotta be in by December first. This one does not have to be published though. So this one, we just fill out, we email it or it's, it's
Electronic?
Online, yeah, it's electronic. Send it to the state. Uh, they look it over.
Nay, yea, or nay, right?
Yeah, not really. I mean, they just look it over and they keep it. Uh, if something's, you know, glaring, I guess they call us and tell us about it, but we, we haven't had that happen yet. So I, I've put a copy of, of this on, by everybody, so you guys could take this home and look at it if that's what you wanna do. Uh, let me explain just a little bit. The last two pages uh, of what I copied for you. No, probably not. No, the way I look at it, yeah, the, the, just the two pages that are stapled together, they look like this. Yep. No. Keep digging, people.
We got a lot, we got a lot of stapled stuff here.
Just two pa- just two pages together. No, keep going. It's down lower.
Just two pages.
There we are. Oh, we got lost.
Okay, everybody's got it, Chris.
Okay, so that first page there, if you look at that, those, those are all the TIF funds that we received this year. Uh, and right beside it, right beside all those numbers, I wrote some littler numbers and letters. So we, we have two commercial TIFs. We have one that's the commercial TIF and then we have the biodiesel commercial TIF. And so we split those up on this report. And what I did was I wrote those down. I, I went back and looked at the apportion papers, uh, wrote those down by biodiesel and by just the regular commercial and then I added them together at the bottom there. Eight, one, zero, zero, two is the regular commercial TIF and that was, we received forty-two thousand, eight hundred and sixty-four dollars in, under that name.
Yeah, the rest of it's biodiesels, right?
Right.
We got B I O.
Bio is B I O, right? Uh, now we did receive in, uh, eight hundred and fifty-three, eight hundred and fifty-one dollars and thirty-five cents. Uh, thirty-one cents, excuse me. Uh, we received that in, in July of fourteen, which is this fiscal year. It was actually four last fiscal year, so you know, that's gotta be in here too, so.
Would council just soon wait on this until Franny's here? Now we've got four to vote.
We don't really have to approve it, Dawn, actually.
No, we don't have to approve this one till the next one. This one just has to be, and it, what happens is I go into the computer and I fill this out and then I tell it that I want it, I want it to make a PDF report. And then in the computer, it locks it, so I can't go in there and do anything.
Anymore.
I can't do anything in there until I either tell it that I don't want that PDF report anymore, I wanna make changes, or we've approved it.
Well, I think it'd be a good idea if we waited and that way these guys could take these home and
This way they can look it over.
Look it over and if they got any questions, they can talk to you.
So that second sheet of paper there, let's talk just a little bit about that then. That, yep. The one with the less, less uh, numbers. The very top up there, uh, those are, those are the uh, expenses that we've had through TIF. The thirteen thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars, that was the uh, the ten streetlights that we put in. That was TIF's share of that project. Uh, seventy-four hundred and twelve dollars and sixty cents, sixty-six cents. That had to do with, um, some planning that we did our uh, TIF plan, our amendment with, uh, and some legal fees. And then the forty-eight thousand, two hundred and forty dollars, uh, that is the purchase of the three lots, three corn belt lots down here. Forty-five thousand of that was the purchase of the lots, uh, thirty-two hundred and forty dollars of that was legal, legal fees. So that's what that is. And then the three amounts below that, eighty-four, thirty-seven, seventeen, forty and uh, forty-one, ninety. Those are all the rebates that we paid to uh, Cookies, Cook and Corn Belt, so.
And then the eighty-three, five, eighty-one, nineteen is what we can apply for this year. Correct?
No. No. Uh. This was, this was done, okay, so the, the, the TIF project up at the top there, that thirteen thousand, five hundred and sixty, that one, that one, we just used TIF funds to pay for. We didn't necessarily apply for that because we already had the TIF funds sitting there. We already had funds sitting there from TIF. Um, the forty-five thousand and um, the thirty, thirty-two hundred of legal fees, we did uh, certify that last November. Um, and probably a portion of the seventy-four hundred, I don't know exactly how much of that. I think probably the whole fifty-five thousand we did. We, we certified all of that last year, so we've gotten part of that in now because it's March or because it's October. Um, and we'll get the rest of it in March. And um, the, the rebates from Cook's Cookies and Corn Belt. Uh, what we did there was we've got a, we've got a balance in our account of uh, north of a hundred thousand dollars. So we told, we told the state and we told the auditors that we've received in all the money for our rebates that we need. We aren't gonna certify any more money for our rebates because we've already got all that money sitting in our bank account. So we won't do that either. What we're gonna certify for this year is our well that we just got done, just got done paying for now. That's seventy-five thousand roughly. And then uh, some electric equipment.
Part of the electric.
Some electric equipment that we bought for down here behind the popcorn plant. That's somewhere around five thousand dollars. So we're gonna certify roughly eighty thousand. Uh, eighty thousand dollars for next year, so.
And Chris, we could certify that behind that. Number yard all the way down. We talked a little bit about that.
Yep.
We can probably should put that in and get some.
We can't.
Give you some tip money.
We can't certify it
No.
right now, but once we get it done, then we could certify it.
We should certify and that way we can cut that cost on that going behind that.
You're not listening to me though.
Yeah, I'll go ahead.
We can't certify it until we get it done.
Right, right, okay.
Okay, so we've gotta do the project first, then we can certify it.
And we can get, take that off.
And another thing that we're gonna do, um, and I should probably ask you guys this instead of tell you, but what, what I wanna do with the, with the TIF funds that we've already got in our bank account is pay for the CPS gas. That's something that we put in our plan. I don't wanna have to certify that. I just wanna, I just wanna pay for that with our TIF funds. We have plenty of TIF funds to do that. I don't think anybody at the state will care. Uh, I mean, we could, we could go about it and do it. We could certify it, but we've already got the money sitting there, so.
What's the cost of that approximately?
We're not a hundred percent sure, but it should be around fifteen thousand, Rob.
Okay. That's with that boring and all that?
Yes.
I guess my, my question on this then is uh, the amount that we can totally certify for and the amount that we are certifying for.
The amount that we can totally certify for is, is roughly eighty-eight thousand dollars, the way I have it figured. And what I did was I took our valuations. I took our um, tax levy, total tax levy and I multiplied those two and it's, it's roughly eighty-eight thousand dollars.
I thought you said eighty-five, you were close, yeah, it's close.
Something like that, so. So yeah, we could, we could certify another eight thousand if we spent the money between now and December first.
Well, what I'm thinking is can we buy some electrical materials? Will that, will that allow us to certify it?
I think, you know, if we, if we bought some electrical materials, it would have to be specified for the downtown area or this down here.
Yeah, and we're gonna do that.
That wouldn't be, but you could do that.
Yeah.
That would be the dumbest thing.
If we bought eight thousand dollars worth of
Wire.
Wire, whatever, you know, transformers, whatever.
Tub, yeah, tubs or something.
We could come up with that by the end of the But yeah, I'm not, it just seems like we're losing out on some of our.
Eight thousand.
Yeah, that we could.
We usually utilize it if we got it.
We'll have to do that at next meeting then, correct?
Well, we'll have to do that before that. I'm not sure, you know, I'm not sure how long it takes to make that stuff, if they can bill us before we actually get it. You know, I don't know. I'll have to look into it. I'll have to do it right away.
Okay.
Or how about the transformer that we are going to use to convert backwards?
We already got it paid for, Rob.
I know.
So we can't, I don't know if we can read.
Yeah, we can. We've already paid for it.
Yeah, cause we've already paid for it. We've already been billed for it.
But do we have to do it in this fiscal year? That's another question we need to ask, huh?
Do we buy this one this year?
I don't think it has to be in the fiscal year. I think it has to be before the December first date.
I mean, that transformer, I don't know what that costs, but.
Also fifteen hundred, it's gotta be fifteen or twenty thousand dollars.
It should get us the rest of it.
That's a good idea.
Well, whatever we do, just use it, utilize it, one way or the other.
Best we can. I mean, it's just, it's not, I guess what I would consider free money or money that we're leaving on the table, but it would be money we're giving back to rather than utilizing the full amount of it that we can.
Kind of like leaving it on the table type of situation.
I don't like to speak about it that way because we need to have a reason to spend it too.
Yeah.
We do have reasons to spend it.
Well, we got, we got an upgrade, so you're talking upgrade. That's where you just will use it.
Is that Albert?
Albert's coming in.
I don't know. That's kinda weird though.
Okay.
Should say, I move me adjourned. Get Albert on there.
So we're gonna wait with that one? That urban renewal report?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I, um, yeah, I think that's what we kinda talked about, isn't it guys?
Yeah, it just gives us a good picture of it though. It's a good report to have. This is the most information we've ever had on any TIF thing so far, you know.
We can, can a little bit understand now.
Before we just had to certify it.
Yeah.
Make the gap, you know, that's, you can't do that anymore, so we have to have a reason to do it.
Well, and we'll talk a little bit more about certifying later on. Uh, we've got that all the way at the end of the, end of the
Program.
Meeting. Discuss and approve the clerk's report. Okay, so the front part.
I'm waiting for Gary to go like this.
Does he have to do that? Page forty-three I got.
Yep.
Alright, that first page is just uh, just the balance to get from one balance, twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and eighteen dollars and three cents was our balance at last month and now this month it's twelve thousand, one hundred and thirty-two dollars and two cents. Uh. And does everybody see this piece of paper right here in front of them? Should be in that, should be in that stack of papers that you guys got. Uh. Joe brought that in today. And uh,
How about that?
So, uh.
Looks like this, Ron.
Yeah.
I know I gotta do that.
Well, it's just, yeah, that's just something that you can take and read, Ron, and the thing, the thing I wanna talk to you about on here was uh, a couple of things, the, the uh, transfer from savings is uh, Dave King's, one of Dave King's bills for the well, that thirty-six thousand, nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars and sixty-one cents. And then uh, if you remember on the last, on the last clerk's report, I told you that I didn't get the money, the, the transfer to savings, I didn't get that done in September. So if you look at, there's two transfers to savings, just, just below payroll. And one of them's twenty-eight thousand, which is what we always transfer. The other one's twenty-three thousand, one sixty-five, ninety-six. The reason it's that amount is because uh, the other four thousand, eight hundred and thirty-four dollars and four cents I took out of the uh, uh, the lost account. We separated those accounts because that's what the auditor wanted us to do. Uh, so now that, what, what we're doing is we're taking that money out of that account, the lost account, and we're putting it into the uh, the sinking bo- bond sinking account and so that goes to pay our uh, part of our bonds. So then we can tell the auditor that um, we know, we know where it's going. Uh, but as Steve and I found out at the last meeting, we're still gonna get dinged for that anyway. And the reason we're gonna get dinged for it is because on our ballot, it says, we'll use this for infrastructure, we'll use this for roads, we'll use this for this.
We're not specific enough.
The last line says, we'll use it for anything that the council sees fit as a city uh, project. And for those words at the end of that, we're gonna get dinged no matter what we do.
And we're not gonna take that off because if
No.
council brings it up that we've got an emergency, we wanna do something, Chris and I have decided that it'd be better off just to leave it on there, but that way we could take it and use it.
And then all it is, is a comment.
Yeah, and she said it's not a bad ding. It's just, it's just a ding.
All it is, is a comment that the, that the auditor's gonna continue to make and say, you know, you guys should have a little more control over this, well. So if there's no questions on that, we'll go to uh, forty, page forty-four, the first page of the balance sheet. Um, all these, all of these accounts have been reconciled and you'll notice the park renovation fund is just under two hundred thousand dollars. Uh, we transferred the money that we owed them, the twenty-five thousand. We also transferred seventy-five hundred dollars into that account because CPS paid us uh, the twenty-five hundred, twenty-five hundred, twenty-five hundred. They, they paid us that in our bank account, so we transferred it into the park account. Uh, and Rob, you were talking a little bit before about the wellness center. It's up to six thousand dollars. Uh, and even after that, we've got a pretty decent, um, Uh and even after that, we've got a pretty decent uh another deposit in there between then and now. So we're up even higher than that, I would say pretty close to seven thousand dollars, so. Uh I think, you know, that's got, that's got the money that we need to put towards that beautification project. And you can see the TIF fund is up around a hundred and fourteen thousand. Um and that's gonna continue to grow.
Our endowment looks nice.
Yeah, and that's actually a little higher than that, uh because we got some uh.
Donations?
We got some, no, we got some interest in.
Oh, okay.
Uh but that's something that.
One and a half?
Well, they, they actually, they actually pay it, they accrue it throughout the year, but they only pay it once a year, so we don't change this until they pay it. It's accrued like fifty dollars maybe, so. We're making a little money, uh and you'll see the lost account there at fifty dollars. Uh that's back up to forty-eight hundred dollars cuz we get paid at the beginning of the month for our lost. But I transfer out, I try to keep fifty dollars in that account just so we can keep it open and then transfer some out, so. And the revenue sinking bond account, that's our bond payment account now, so that one's gonna continue to grow. The bond interest and savings account is not gonna continue to grow because we don't save money to that anymore, so that's gonna stay around that fifty thousand dollar mark. Unless we need to take some money out to uh to pay bills, which we haven't had to do. For a while. And you know, with our gas coming up, we shouldn't have to do that anymore. Are there any questions on this particular page?
I see the community center main savings, though we did take that out finally for the dance floor.
Right, yeah. And the, the actual community center account is right around that ten thousand dollar mark, and that's kinda where we. We, we wanted to keep it uh since we started paying salaries and um. You know, we've had a couple of.
Lynn, can I get five copies of this page, please? Because then I could. Yeah, just the balance sheet there, because then I could.
And they can show them.
Meeting Thursday night, Thursday morning.
So if there aren't any questions about this page, we can go uh to the first page of the general fund. Which is page forty-six. You can see that we got a little, we got a little bit of donations for the, for the park. Uh and basically, we got our general property taxes and, and uh, and our taxes in last month. Usually coming about the tenth or the eleventh of, of October, we get our big charge.
Now, we won't see anything again of that until April.
We see a little dribble here and there, Steve, but it's nothing.
Latecomers.
It's nothing that's gonna, you know, make much of a difference to our account. Five hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Six hundred dollars, something like that, so it won't be too big of a deal, but. Yeah, and we get all of them at the same time, we get debt service, we get TIF, we get uh general property tax, so, yeah. Yeah, so we get a pretty good charge in, in October and in April usually.
That's what I thought, it was April.
Yeah. Are there any questions? On this page here?
Okay, Chris?
So yeah, go to the next page there, and there's really almost nothing on that page. The only thing is uh the payment for, to Lakeview for police services. Uh and then some, some little uh expenses here and there for electricity and natural gas.
Does Lakeview have any more talks in their minutes on their? Police wages going up?
No, uh there have been some rumblings as far as uh, you know. Police, I guess, just police, sounds like um.
They hired a new kid named Alex.
They hired a new, yeah, a new young twenty-four-year-old.
Just out of the academy, just out of.
Nice kid, seems like, pretty nice kid. But yeah, I mean, I'm not sure that they're, that Lakeview's uh done changing things. You know, but our, but as far as our contract goes, it's, it's where it is for the next year now, uh. Next year and a half, year and a half, so it'll be.
We can still change with the ninety-nine dollars.
Right, uh. We, you know, we still do have the option of the sheriff, and we found out last year that that's quite a bit cheaper.
About half.
No, it's not quite half, it's.
But you don't get the control that you get.
I don't know, nobody bought them, they like it.
It's just, it's just something to keep in mind, it's not anything that we need to argue about right now, it's just something to keep in mind, so.
I, I'm just gonna say when, when I get an investigation out of them for my store break-in.
Well, the sheriff should be the best, but I don't mean they are.
Good comment.
Okay, Chris? Yeah, next page. And you can see the, the park uh expenses are gonna, they're gonna continue to rise and. Hopefully, we have a whole bunch of money in there, uh you know, within the next couple of months, cuz that means that there's work being done up there. Other than that, the only, the only other thing on there is the cemetery, you know, that's gonna. That, that won't be increasing anymore because we won't be mowing out there, but that's just something that we can watch all year. Um next page. Community Center. Urban renewal, that's uh, all that is, is our new addition up there, and that's gonna, I mean. The six hundred dollars that we're gonna pay Snyder, that's gonna go in there, we still owe Goberson Smith about nineteen thousand dollars, that's uh. Retainage, so that'll go in here yet.
When's that have to be paid by?
Well, when we close the project out, and I talked to Dave Sturm about a couple of issues that we want, we'd like to see fixed up there. Uh not really terribly big issues, but uh so when the project gets closed out, then we'll pay that, and that'll be within, I would guess, but.
By the first of the year.
I would guess before the first of the year, yeah, by the first of the year, yeah, that's what I think anyway. Then you can see uh nothing too out of the ordinary on those. Uh next few sheets. I would say the conference and meetings, they're that thirteen hundred dollars, that probably, uh a lot of that probably has to do with um. The school that we sent Myron and Rick to uh back in September, late September. They both did some uh pretty expensive schooling, some two-day-long stuff that costs some.
Major bucks.
Decent amount of money, yeah, but it's stuff that we have to, I mean, we gotta have them certified in some of these things, so. It's nothing we can really get around.
When are we gonna do this uh D fifty-nine, Chris?
Well, you know, uh the county always kinda talked about doing that at the same time, and then we, we brought the DOT out. And we asked them to look at this road, and anytime you change the surface of a road, you have to make, make each intersection.
We talked about that.
So if you have an intersection, you have four corners that you have to make both ways, ADA compliant.
Yep.
And uh Ron Hayden, our engineer, I mean, as we started walking, he, his cringe just got. Greater and greater, he's like, I, I don't really wanna mess with this at all. Uh so. And Gary and I have talked about it a little bit, you know, we're not, we're not sure that it's in that bad a shape that we need to have something major done.
That's, so let us check.
Uh but, you know, we may, we may talk about doing a seal coat at some point in time, I don't know.
Our, our seal coat looks pretty good, pretty impressive, I think, what we've done this fall, or this year, this summertime. Don't you?
Hmm, certain ones.
Well.
Well, it looks good everywhere except for when you gotta actually live on it. That gets to be a different story cuz you track it into your car, you track it into your business, and that's like, it takes a year.
We had that year, she was bad, 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 but this year was great.
I know, but during that year, it's, it's tough.
But it's pretty reasonable compared to milling out and laying down.
Well, I understand, but hopefully it lasts as long too.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can, I can tell you, we, we can't afford to mill.
Not that far.
I mean, even if we spent the eighty thousand dollars a year that we get in taxes on milling, you know, we would get nowhere. You know? We just.
Yeah, you can't get out of the nut, rock will cost you forty thousand dollars, I suppose.
Sorry to run that up, Chris.
Oh, I don't know, that's fine. Next page, page fifty, road use taxes, that's just a regular, regular amount that we get in. Uh the thing that we do with this account is we, we get it into a separate, separate account, and then whatever bills we have for that month. We transfer that money out of that account into our general fund. Where before, it used to just go into our general fund and we'd spend it however, we didn't necessarily know exactly where it was going, other than this report, you know. So uh this is a little bit better way to do it, it's a little more work, but. It's not difficult work, so.
If you've got questions for Chris. Ask him now.
And here's our TIF, and this is, this is a portion of what you guys saw earlier in our urban renewal report. Uh this is just one month of what we, what we showed as far as getting in and sending out. You can see that we paid uh Cooks Cookies and Corn Belt again this year, and the price, or the. Payments were a little bit different than, than uh what you saw, but. They're gonna be due to taxes, so. Debt service. We. We've got about. We've got about fifteen thousand dollars sitting in this account, and if you take the, the negative twenty-eight hundred dollars and, and the eighteen thousand that we've gotten in. That's about what we've got sitting in that account, and that's, I think we'll have a couple hundred dollars left over after we pay our. Uh interest, what you asked about Gary on the bills to be paid. They're real close to each other, so hopefully that continues to go that way, that we just have the money sitting there, we can pay it. And uh we don't have to worry about borrowing that from anywhere, from any of our other accounts. So on the, now, not on the next clerk's report, but uh, well, maybe you will, I don't know when we'll pay that. It, it's due December first, so we'll probably pay it before that, so you'll probably see on the next report that we've paid that out, that interest. Okay, the next uh, next page, page fifty-three, uh you got our utility accounts and. And if you look at them, uh just go from top to bottom, if you look at them, every single one of them went backwards except for the sewer. And once we get to the accounts, I can explain that a little bit better, why that happened. Uh but obviously, the one, the big one that you can see is the water, and, and the reason that is is because the, you know, the uh. CDBG project is still going on, so we're gonna continue to go up and down in that when we get money in, when we don't. Well, probably, I would, I would just guess we're gonna end up somewhere around uh a hundred thousand dollars backwards. Uh or negative in that, because of this project, just, that's just a guess. So we'll see how close that is. Come on in, Bill.
I got a complaint.
Oh, you do?
Yeah. Who's the complaint department?
They're, they're shut down for the night.
Too damn cold outside.
Let's put it this way, I hope you're lucky tonight up there.
Don't go outside, that's what I'd say.
Just go and clip them.
Yeah, that's for sure.
Alright, so if you go to the next page, page fifty-four there, um. You can see our revenues, our electricity revenues, and then our expenses, and if you look at our purchase of electricity, that's sixty-two thousand. That has a month and a half of purchases in it, and that's the reason why we're uh upside down there, that nineteen thousand. So, and we've, you know, we've had that happen a couple of times, and just the way the bills fall uh when they come in, when we pay them. So.
Timing.
Yep, it's all, it's all about bills and timing uh in that account. And then um operating supplies there, that's seventy-five hundred dollars. Uh that is some electrical equipment for uh. For the new addition and for this uh transformer that we just put in. So that's something that we don't see very often. So those two things together made us, you know, go backwards, that nineteen thousand dollars, that should straighten out next month.
Could we use that on the, on the uh. Certifying the dip?
What?
That, that money there, that, because it's already been paid for, correct?
Well. Like Rob said, that, that transformer that we put in there, we can figure out how much that costs and we can use that, but the, the money for the new addition, we can't.
Okay, alright.
That's, that's in a whole other TIF district, and that's residential, so that doesn't have anything to do with commercial.
Okay, I kinda wondered about that, I could've said that never.
Yeah, for the majority of the money, we can't use that. Okay, go to the natural gas now and. This one, I wasn't terribly excited about when I saw that we lost two thousand dollars in our uh, in this fund. But then I went back and I looked, and, and if you look at, look at the purchase of natural gas and the transmission charges. That's roughly forty-nine thousand dollars. Uh we received in fifty-two thousand and, and uh, or fifty-three thousand, and um. Forty-six or forty-seven thousand dollars of that fifty-two thousand came from WIE. So we didn't, we didn't hardly use any gas at all, this is, and you gotta remember, this is September. Usage, so we didn't use any gas hardly at all in September. And then we bought twenty-seven hundred dollars worth of supplies for uh the new addition and for CPS, and so uh, you know. September's not a good month for natural gas for us at all, first of all. Uh second of all, when we, when we make a three thousand dollar purchase like that, that's, that's the whole, basically the whole reason why we went backwards. And if you look, it's only two thousand dollars that we went, went in the hole. Uh so if we wouldn't have purchased that, we would've actually made a little bit of money. Um but this, this'll turn around, we, we've got some good uh usage from our farmers this last month. Uh and this month too, they'll, they'll be using some, the way it sounds, uh so. And then hopefully, you know, we talked to George a couple of times about getting CPS bored. Uh he told me that once it gets down to twenty-five degrees, he can't bore cuz his water freezes up and it just doesn't work right, so. You know, we're gonna try to, we're gonna try to pick the right day to get that done.
I've been holding off turning the furnace on.
And yeah, and have IMU come up and get it, uh well, it won't make any difference in the office. Cuz we're not gonna hook the office up anyway, but uh.
I'm talking about my house.
Oh. Well, turn it on. Now, uh you look at the water, this is the next one, the water, this one's easy to explain, I mean, if you look at the, the bottom number there in our expenditures. We spent thirty-eight thousand dollars on the well, and we got no revenue in, for that whatsoever. So, and you can see we, we were uh negative thirty-four thousand, so if you take that thirty-eight thousand, we're right where we should've been.
Sewer looks okay.
Yeah, sewer looks good, we didn't, we didn't do anything to that one until this month. Now, next month, it's gonna look pretty shitty, cuz we got that. That eleven thousand dollar bill that we got.
Rob's project.
Will go right here, yeah. Yeah, sewer does look shitty, doesn't it? Supposed to. But yeah, that one, that one actually kept us afloat this month, and then uh garbage.
Talk to him about, a little bit about uh what the auditor said about. Kinda what we discussed about closing this account out, or zeroing it, actually, not closing it, but zeroing it out.
Well, yeah. Another comment that we got was that the uh ending fund balance in our garbage fund was negative. And they don't like to see that, so. We talked at the last meeting about how we could transfer money out of there and put it into our garbage, or out of our electric fund. Or our natural gas fund, whichever one, and put it into our uh garbage fund, which I think is fine to do. But I guess, you know, since it's negative this month. Which I think is fine to do, but I guess, you know, since it's negative this month, we don't exactly know where it's gonna finish up, you know, we think it should be, uh, pretty close to even or maybe a little
Didn't she say we could wait till January first though?
Actually, we can wait till the end of the fiscal year, and that's what I would suggest we do, because if we transfer money right now and it continues to go negative, then we're gonna have to do it again in, in June.
Right.
So my suggestion would be that, you know, this is something that we keep in the back of our mind and that in June, you know, we either take the money out of the electric fund or the natural gas fund, one of the two and we just, we just zero it out, yeah, at the end of the year, it's zero.
I couldn't remember if she said fiscal year or if she said, uh, calendar year.
No, yeah, it's fiscal year. So that would be what I would suggest we do, is wait till the end of the fiscal year.
Well, that way we can see where it's going anyway then.
Yeah.
They're probably gonna go, I don't know what it's gonna do after we do it.
Well, I mean, I mean, you can see, we talked a little bit about this, uh, on the last meeting, you know, we were above water at the last meeting and and then, um, I think it was Franny, he said, well, yeah, wait till we have our assessment come in and that's forty-five hundred dollars of that five thousand dollars. And so then obviously we went backwards, we went into the negative, so. And yeah, I've heard a couple of times, Steve, that costs are gonna go up, but I don't think anybody knows that right now. You know, as far as the landfill goes.
We don't, and the reason that we don't know, because we don't know what the transfer station's gonna cost us, we don't know what place it's gonna cost us to take it and truck it somewhere else, because we're up in arms now whether it's gonna go to Carroll County or whether
When are they gonna close it?
Uh, it'd be, uh, next year. I gotta see what the heads, I can't remember what the headspace said that was left in it.
Maybe she's full, we shut her down, huh?
Yep. She was a five to four vote against to shut her down, so I will tell you that Walik wanted to keep it open, Litten wanted to keep it open, uh, Sex City wanted to keep it open. And I can't remember the fourth right off the top of my head, I knew, I do know that Auburn and Early, and I believe it was Shaler. And
And the township people.
And Lakeview, and I think it was Odebo, no, Odebo wasn't there at all.
No, it was the country people, the township, whatever you wanna call it.
Yeah, that district, yeah. So.
Okay, anything else, Chris? I don't have anything else, guys, if you got questions, make sure you ask me.
If no questions and no further discussion, I would entertain a motion to approve the clerk's report. I'd make that motion to approve the clerk's report. Second, Gary?
I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded? To approve the clerk's report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
Two to one.
Okay, approved TIF certification eight-one-zero-zero-two and eight-one-zero-zero-six, which is in your, in front of you. That Chris has handed out to you. You wanna explain a little bit, Chris, or?
Well, yeah, what I did here was, uh, gave myself the same one. Oh, no. Let me look on here once and, no, see, I, I changed it. And I don't think I changed
Mine?
No, I did, I don't, I didn't change the ones that I have. I changed the ones that I gave to you guys, so what I did was I, before I did this
Thirty-seven-five.
Yeah, before I, before I did the final one, I put in here, just so I could get something in the, uh, in the book. I split up to seventy-five thousand, cause I knew we were gonna do the well and I knew it was gonna come in right at seventy-five thousand dollars or pretty close to that, so I just split it in half. One district did thirty-seven-five and one, the other district did thirty-seven-five. Well, then I, uh, I got the bill from Kings and I started looking at our, uh, our plan, our TIF plan, and I remembered that we could use the electric project down here, so. Uh, so I split them up, the way you guys see them there in front of you, uh, not on the
Screen.
Not on the screen, but in front of you and, um, the, the bigger district, you know, what was that, forty-five thousand, forty-five thousand one hundred dollars, that's got the transformer and some wire uh, for down here behind the popcorn plant in it, and the other one's got the, the part of the well in it, so, uh, and that one's pretty close to maxed out, the thirty-five thousand, that so what I can do is I can go back and say, you know, we bought this transformer, we're using it now to, um, to keep our electricity on for our, for our businesses on the south side of town here, uh, I can, I mean,
You got it right here, it's, it's self-explanatory right there.
Yeah, well, that's what I gotta do, I gotta just go put it in there, type it in there. Um, and we've only got like eighty-eight thousand five hundred and forty-four dollars is what I figured up as recoupable from the TIF, so I'll just get to that number and, uh, what, I mean, that transformer costs way more than eight thousand dollars, so. Yeah, so that's what I'll do, I'll bring that back to you guys on the next meeting and then we can approve it. That's not anything that has to be public, that just has to be approved, signed by the mayor and no, you can have it, I don't want it.
Right, but they're, you're not gonna sign these, cause you're gonna readapt these.
Right, right. Right, so we'll have that on the next meeting. And then, uh, the last thing that I have on here is that letter from the, uh, IEDA that talks about our contract extension through the end of the year. And with the project being ninety-two percent done, we should, if the weather doesn't turn really bad here pretty quick, we should get it completely finished.
You just got the stuff down there, the well, you didn't do none of that?
Well, they got, we got, in the pump house, in the pump building, uh, there's that work, but that can be done anytime, in, in the winter or not, so.
Okay, Greg Schmitz, at, talked to me today at work and there's a lift station down to the, uh, east of him in the, and he wants to know if he can plant flowers down in there. His cost, next spring. Totally up to you guys, I, I said I would approach council tonight.
Greg Schmitz, you mean, right there, yeah.
Jerry's old place.
Yeah.
Be just to the east, east, I'm sorry. Down by the lift station. Totally up to you guys.
Fine with me.
I will tell him tomorrow. Um, sounds like we got a good turnout coming Thursday. We're up to almost fifty people according to what Chris told me now.
Right, I called you.
Yeah.
Did I?
Yes, you didn't, your wife did.
Okay. So we got a good crowd coming?
Yeah, uh, forty-six or forty-seven, I can't remember the exact number, but somewhere in there.
Got a hand doing the meal?
Yep.
Smoke pork chops, chicken, green bean casserole, mashed potatoes and gravy, you know, bun and
Lettuce, lettuce salad.
Lettuce salad, okay. That's when we'll get our, uh, grant money from SETD?
Yep.
Well, I get some, I don't know how much, do you know how much it is, Chris?
Uh, the library asked for probably, hmm, ten thousand dollars, I would guess.
Yeah, that was one of their projects they were having, yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, that's what, that's all we're getting. Uh, I was approached last week, Thursday, Friday, by, uh, Mike Hay came in and talked to me about the water running on the street again. Uh, wants to know if we can do something about it. Told him we've talked about it several times and our ordinance tells us what to do and so I don't know if we wanna revisit that.
Yeah, Lois, I, I was walking the other day and she's, all the leaves and the water and it's, it's a mess.
Can we give me a rub?
Yeah, I know, I, I don't know.
We can't enough this year much anymore anyway, so. Did it next year, see, see if we can dream up something maybe.
What do you wanna do, you're off tomorrow, Chris, so what do you wanna do, run, you see if I can hold a Franny? To see if he will come in, if he's available, we gotta see what the weather's gonna do tonight.
I talked to Franny today and he said he wouldn't make it, unless it rains, he said he wouldn't make it.
Well, that's why I kinda wanna see it, cause it's supposed to rain tonight, you know?
If it does, it's not gonna be enough to stop him.
Okay.
I don't think.
You got anybody in mind that you wanna approve him, you wanna approve him or?
I can
No, I'm not gonna.
Or Rob?
I can come in tomorrow.
Okay, well, well, they're closed tomorrow here. Veterans Day. And we're veterans tomorrow. Veterans Day tomorrow.
Huh? When did what happen, did we get that day off?
Yeah.
Ever since, ever since the handbook was approved.
Anybody got anything else?
Nothing except, uh, we are going ahead with our, getting the houses, we've, thirty days is up, so I suppose you're going ahead and that, Chris, the best we can do, or the mayor, the lawyer can, huh?
Well, here's what I found out, uh, because I've actually had a little bit of correspondence with both parties. Yeah, it's amazing what a document from the court will do. But, yeah, it sounds to me like it's not, it's not thirty days, it's sixty days after the date of, I think it's posting, so, uh, December ninth is the sixtieth day and, uh, if we haven't come to some form of, of an agreement by then, then, uh, we go to, we go to court or we get some kind of a judgment from the court and then, uh, we take, it's, I don't think it's quite that simple, but then we take title to the property, but, but here's the worst part about it, then we gotta clean the damn thing up. You know, so it's not, this is gonna be a free ride.
Well, something I found out, that it is approved by the state of Iowa, you can't have a fire department burn a house down two a year.
Oh, really?
Twice a year.
Well, and I, I, another thing that we can do, another thing that we can do is, uh, this, for the one down here on First Street, we can use TIF funds to take care of that because that's in a TIF district. We talked about that, that's in our plan, I don't know what the, what the amount is that we can spend, uh, to clean it up, but that is something that we can do, so.
The other one's treating everything out up there, they're, they got the big dumpster up there. Man, they're moving, they're hauling stuff out of that, baby, beat hell. I don't know if they're gonna try to fix it up or do something, but.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not exactly sure what they wanna do there, I know, I know they've got some things in there that they wanna get out. Uh, they want us to turn the electricity and the water on, uh, we went up there to do that today and we told them that we wouldn't turn it on unless they were there, they had an electrician there, cause it sounds like something in there's
Snap, crackle, pop?
Not.
Right.
Must have insurance, I guess, then.
Let's say, I don't know.
Well, I'll tell you what, to go up there and start fixing that house, it will take a little bit with that garage and breeze away and that, unless they just knock it down for, and just keep the house, she's pretty bad shape.
That garage is not in good shape.
Next week is the Northwest Iowa League meeting, like to see a few of us go from here, it's at La Mars. I'm not sure what the topic is gonna be yet, but I'll try and find out and let you know as soon as possible.
What day is that?
I believe it's the twentieth, Chris.
Yeah, you're right.
I believe it's the twentieth.
I'll be in
It's Thursday night for this, isn't it, for us?
Yeah, Thursday night this week, and that, that also is on a Thursday night, right, Steve?
Yes.
I will be in, uh, North Platt, Nebraska, actually, I'm going to Omaha, Nebraska on Wednesday. There's a WAPA meeting out there, they're gonna talk about rates. So I'm gonna go to that and then from there, I'm gonna go to North Platt, um,
That's a long ways.
That's a long ways, that meeting starts at nine o'clock in the morning on Thursday morning.
You're out in God's country.
Have you had any response on, uh, this demand power or anything, or, and have you been having any luck on that, or having that time to do it probably, but?
No, I mean, we talked about it at the last meeting. We talked about it at the last meeting and, and this isn't something that we talk about all the time, Gary, because that, that company out there moves even slower than we do. So, there's no, no new update, as far as that goes, and there won't be.
Yeah, right.
I mean, I, I may be able to tell you something after this meeting on, uh, that, that next meeting on Thursday that I'm going to is a board meeting and that's when all of the groups like us can go out there and vote on whatever we vote on, I don't know what they'll have on the meeting, but.
You might learn something out there in that.
I'll definitely learn something out there, because that won't be a meeting where, you know, there's eight or ten people, there'll be thirty or forty people in that room, I would guess.
Healthier than that, I'm guessing forty, forty-five, I, I remember what Ray was telling me.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, but there'll be a lot more than eight, I'll bet.
Nothing else, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move. I'll second.
There, take your pick on who made the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carried.